I call this City Commission Meeting of the City of Pahokee Tuesday, December the tenth, two thousand and twenty-four to order at six oh one P. M. May we please stand for the invitation provided by Vice Mayor Mervin, followed by the pledge of the Legion.
Let us pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus God, we come before you today, God, to say thank you. Thank you for another day, God, that we've never seen before, God, but you have brought us this far. And God, we know, God, that you will carry us on, God. And God, as we come here today, God, to do the business of the city, Father God, we ask you, God, to give us wisdom, guidance, oh God, to give us unity, oh God, in the name of Jesus. God bless the city of Pahokee. God bless each and every resident, oh God. Bless the ones that's here tonight, oh God. God bless our mayor, our commission, city staff, oh God. Let us be as one, oh God, like you have us to be. God, that we can agree and we can disagree, God, with the spirit of love. And God, we give your name the praise, the honor, and the glory, in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Bab.
President.
Vice Mayor Mervin.
Present.
Commissioner Bowden.
Present.
Commissioner McPherson.
Present.
City Manager.
Present.
City Attorney.
Here.
City Clerk is present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, staff. And most importantly, thank our audience for being here today to participate and listening in our regular commission meeting. At this time, City Manager, do we have any additions on an emergency basis?
No, sir.
Thank you. City Commission, having heard it, there are no additions, no deletions, but if your pledge has to pertain to the agenda.
Mayor Bab, I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Second. It has been moved by Commissioner Williams and properly seconded by Commissioner Bowden for the adoption of the agenda as presented. Call for questions. Hearing none, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Calhoun Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden.
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin.
Present.
Mayor Bab.
Yes.
At this time, we will move to our presentation, proclamation, public service announcement, public comments, agenda items only at this time. City Clerk, do we have any public service or public comments cards completed?
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Now we're moving to our proclamations. We have a proclamation here, and we'll have our City Attorney read it into the record.
This is a proclamation, whereas Ms. Catherine Wilson Biggums was born on December the eighteenth, nineteen twenty-four, in Jacksonville, Florida, to the late Mr. James Wilson and the late Ms. Martha Thornton. And whereas Ms. Biggums, most her mother passed when she was six years old, six months old, excuse me, leading to her being raised by her father in Georgia with support from his family. And whereas, as an adult, she migrated from Georgia to Canal Point, Florida, and worked primarily in the agricultural industry. And whereas, in nineteen seventy, Ms. Biggums moved from Sandcut to Pahokee Housing Authority, a move that solidified her as a longstanding resident since its inception in nineteen seventy and a cherished member of that community. And whereas, Ms. Biggums is the mother of Shirley Jean Ingram and the late Milton Tony, and has a host of grandchildren whom she loves dearly, a love that has deeply connected her to her family. And whereas, on December the eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, Ms. Biggums will mark a momentous milestone, celebrating a century of life, a feat that deserves our utmost recognition and celebration. Now therefore, I, Keith W. Bab, Jr., Mayor of the City of Pahokee, and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby wish Ms. Catherine Wilson Biggums a happy one-hundredth birthday. Residents are encouraged to extend warm wishes during this joyous and historic occasion, and it's proclaimed this tenth day of December, twenty twenty-four, signed by Mayor Keith W. Bab, Jr., Vice Mayor Claire Mervin, Commissioner Derek Bowden, Commissioner Sanqueta Calhoun Williams, and Commissioner Ernest D. McPherson, Senior.
Everett.
I'm sorry, Everett D. McPherson, Senior. Excuse me.
Thank you. And would the Commission join me down on the podium so we can present this proclamation to Ms. Biggums?
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
Ms. Biggums, and your family, on behalf of the Pahokee City Commission, Commissioner Derek Bowden, Vice Mayor Claire Mervin, Commissioner Sanqueta Calhoun Williams, Commissioner Everett McPherson, Senior, along with our City Manager.
I can't hear, I don't know what to say.
And our entire city staff, we congratulate you on your birthday, your one-hundred-year birthday.[348.39][348.39](Applause) That is my only and thankful for one person, our heavenly Father above, you are blessed. We are blessed to have you in the city of Pahokee.
I can't hear a lot.
You have.[353.39][353.39](Laughter) In twenty twenty-two, we celebrated our one-hundred-year birthday as a city. To have you come along and be one-hundred years, we are so proud of you. You are a tween. We welcome you, we thank you for all that you have done, and we'll have our Commissioner present you with a bouquet of flowers, both the Commissioner and the Vice Mayor.
Y'all are sweet, love you.
Yes, ma'am, I know you from a little girl who was, and I grew up together, pet child. I'm Ms. Lucy's daughter, I'm Commissioner Sanqueta Calhoun Williams, and on behalf of the entire Commission, we want to give you these flowers. (Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
And she stated, and the mayor stated, that we are just so admire you being here today with us. We thank you for your wisdom, your guidance. We know many, many have came up under you, that you have tutored, but we want to say happy birthday. If I was a singer, I would sing happy birthday to you.
Okay.
But happy birthday, and may God bless you.[374.39][374.39](Applause)
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Biggums. Happy birthday to you.[379.39][379.39](Applause)
Make sure you get this in a beautiful frame. I want to also have your picture included in here, so it will be forever keep safe for you and your family. And God bless you, may you live another hundred years.[384.39][384.39](Laughter) Very nice.
Oh, give me that one. Listen to that phone. Go get Jasmine Richie. Jasmine got my chair. Jasmine got my chair. (Inaudible)
And City Manager Jackson, would you present our next presenter?
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. Our next presentation will come in the form of a check presentation to Sojourners with Healing Hearts, of the opinion that Dr. Jenga will be here to receive.
No, there, there, she's here.
Okay. Okay, well, I didn't realize that we had a representative from Sojourner with Healing Hearts. Could you please come forward?
Good evening. About last, in October, we had our first mug, sweat, and cheers breast cancer walk. And it was, it was a vision of the Pahokee Church of God, and I called and just made a couple of phone calls to a couple of people and see how we can bring this out to the community. And I called always Annie, who wears so many different hats, Bridges of Pahokee, Bowden Community Impact, Dr. Jenga from Empire Health, and the one standing in the middle is from Sojourner's Healing Hearts, that represents breast cancer for women that does not have insurance, or even if you have insurance, that you can have your mammograms. So we did the walk, and we wanted to give back everything that we had collected, the hundred percent of it goes to Sojourner's, to help continue to fight for women with breast cancer, or get the mammograms. So tonight, we would like to just present, first, I want to thank everyone, all of our citizens that came out, they probably had over a hundred or so participants that came out to with this walk. We did almost like a two and a half, a three-mile walk. Then we had a little luncheon, thank to the fire department that came out, P. B. S. O., they all walked with us, and I tell you, it was a tremendous, tremendous day, the City Manager, his family, some of the Commission came out, I mean, we just, the attorney came, we just had a fantastic time on that day. That was just the first one. So tonight, we would just like to present the amount that we raised to Sojourner's to continue to, to fight, to continue to help people, which they help within the Glaze community. So tonight, I would like to present a check to Sojourner's with Healing Hearts, in the amount of two thousand and seventy-seven dollars is what we collected during the breast cancer walk. So Sojourner's, this is, this is to you. I know this is the big check, but we do have a real one.[430.39][430.39](Laughter) So we want to say thank you so much, and come out and be a part of this, and look forward to next year.
Thank you. On behalf of the board members, and all of the survivors that we serve, we appreciate this gesture. We provide education, as well as free screenings and financial support for anyone facing breast cancer that cannot afford to, and it is my pleasure to be out here and serve the community here as well.
And I will also thank you to the cities when I got, when I made the phone call to each one of the city managers. Ms. Annie and I even went to some of the city commissioners, and they didn't even give a second thought, they said, no, not at all. I took it to Mr. Jackson, he said, whatever he could do to make it work, he made it work. So we want to thank all of the city, everybody with their donations, everyone with just coming out, bringing cases of water, we just want to say thank you to the community, thank you to everyone. So if you would, if the Commission would come down and please take a picture with the, with the, Sojourner, with the, the team.
The team.
The team. And the team is mug, sweat, and cheers, so get ready, because it will be next year awesome.
Thank you.[454.39][454.39](Applause) Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move to our consent agenda. We have two items on our consent agenda. First one is November the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, City Commission Workshop Minutes, and the second is the November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, City Commission Meeting Minutes. I entertain a motion for the adoption of the consent agenda as presented.
Mayor Bab, I move to accept the November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four workshop and commission meeting minutes.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bowden and properly seconded by Vice Mayor Mervin for the adoption of the consent agenda item as presented. Call for questions. Hearing none, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bowden.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin.
Yes.
Commissioner Calhoun Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson.
Yes.
Mayor Bab.
Yes. Next, we'll move to our consent agenda. We have two items on our consent agenda. First one is November the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, City Commission Workshop Minutes, and the second is the November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, City Commission Meeting Minutes. I entertain a motion for the adoption of the consent agenda as presented.
Mayor Bab, I move to accept the November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four workshop and commission meeting minutes.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bowden and properly seconded by Vice Mayor Mervin for the adoption of the consent agenda item as presented. Call for questions. Hearing none, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bowden.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin.
Yes.
Commissioner Calhoun Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson.
Yes.
Mayor Bab.
Yes. Next, we'll move to old business, update of city projects, City Manager.
Yes, sir. Mayor and Commissioner, I'd like Ms. Adams to provide an update on the projects of the city at this current time.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission, residents. For our city project update, for our capital improvement projects for December twenty twenty-four, December the ninth, Phase Four Resurfacing Project, the bid will, opening bid will be held on February third of January, two thousand and twenty-five, here at the chambers at ten A. M. And again, that resurfacing project is for East Fifth Street, M. L. K., West Fifth, West Third, and we're going to try to get in West Second, but that is contingent upon the bid amounts, the amount of funding that we receive from F. D. O. T. is two hundred and ten thousand. McClure Reconstruction Project, McClure, we're nearing the sixty percent utility design submitted to Palm Beach County by the end of this month. We will begin permitting and the bidding process in February, two thousand and twenty-five. A community engagement meeting is scheduled for January, two thousand and twenty-five, with Palm Beach County Water Utility and W. G. I. Design usually takes anywhere from a few months to a year. Again, we got this project in two thousand and nineteen nineteen, due to some delays, but the total project cost is one million, one hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. F. D. O. T. is only funding nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars, and that is for the design and the construction and C. E. I. costs for the projects. Palm Beach County Water Utility, their I. L. A. for funding contributes eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that funding is for utility design. An extension letter is being submitted to F. D. O. T. for this project. The project is scheduled to be completed in June, two thousand and twenty-five. The project contract, again, is slated in two thousand and twenty-five. An extension is requested for the design completion, permitting, bidding, and construction, as well as the closeout. Next, we have F. D. E. P. M. L. K. Park Improvement Projects. This project is funded by F. D. E. P., Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and that's for two hundred and seventy thousand, twenty thousand dollars of that two seventy is match from the city. Those targeted task items, deliverables for this project include fixing of decayed paving, as well as new additional parking, installing playground equipment, outdoor fitness, restore and replace the recreational shelter, install new L. E. D. lighting, install a new walking path, remodel the baseball soccer fields, and new seating and the bleachers at the field. And then an extension will be coming forth for this project as well. Capital Improvement Projects, surtax funding is for the Parks and Recs Commercial Roof Replacement Building A. They are badly in need of a roof, and that opening bid will be held on Friday, the third of January, two thousand and twenty-five, also here at the Commission Chambers at two P. M. The only individuals that can, that we will be opening bids for are those that were in attendance at the pre-bidment meeting. That was a mandatory pre-bid meeting, and in order to submit a proposal, you also had to be available and onsite the date of the pre-bid meeting. Arpa Home Repair, the city has met with the contractor and residents to finalize the remaining services to complete the repairs needed for their homes. We anticipate that final proposals from the contractors for these Arpa Home Repair Program recipients over the next couple of weeks. And so that is in reference to some of those individuals who still had some issues with a former contractor. City Events, the Christmas Parade will be held on Monday, December, two thousand and twenty-four. The lineup will begin at five fifteen on Layermore, and step off will be promptly at six fifteen. The parade route will take place Layermore to East Main, East Main to North Lake, North Lake to South Lake, and we will end at M. L. K. Park. If you are interested in participating in the parade, please contact City Hall for application, to submit your application. Christmas Toy Giveaway, the toy giveaway will be held on Thursday, the nineteenth of December, from six to eight P. M. here at Parks and Recs. You must be registered, so if you want to, your child to receive toys, then you have to contact City Hall to pick up an application and to be registered. Again, it is only for those individuals who are registered. The event will take place in our gymnasium, and it will be, with the parent has to be present with the child, the child must be there to receive their gift. And registrations for that will close on Friday, the thirteenth of December. M. L. K. Parade will be held on Saturday, the eighteenth, January, two thousand and twenty-five, beginning at eleven A. M. The lineup will start at ten A. M. on Layermore. The parade route is Layermore to East Main, East Main to North Lake, North Lake to South Lake, and ending at M. L. K. Park. And again, if you are interested in participating in the parade, please contact City Hall. We're also looking for sponsors for our M. L. K. events. Chamber News, Belgrade Chamber of Commerce, the City Commission is invited to join the Belgrade Chamber of Commerce Monthly Networking Breakfast, and that breakfast will be held on Wednesday, December the eleventh, at seven thirty A. M. in the cafeteria of Lakeside Hospital. This monthly breakfast is sponsored by Lakeside Medical Center, and Karis Engel from the Glaze Initiative will be the guest speaker. The breakfast is free for all Bell, for all Chamber members and their guests, and we are a member. Black Chamber of Commerce of Palm Beach County, new and existing member orientation is in-person training, will be held on Tuesday, December the twenty-fourth, from six to seven P. M., and this is held every third Tuesday of the month. And it will be, it's located at five sixty Village Boulevard, Suite One Twenty, Number Nineteen, in West Palm Beach. And again, this event is also free to existing and new Chamber members. And that is all for my update. Thank you.
If I may add, thank you, Ms. Adams. If I may add, two additional capital improvement projects that Ms. Adams left off her list this evening, that's two signage projects, one entryway signage, and also the signage for City Hall, as previously discussed.[606.39]
Thank you for this platform. Thank you for the opportunity to come out and represent surgery and healing arts. My name is Gail Forrester. I am over ten years cancer-free, but diagnosed at thirty-nine, and I encourage everyone, men and women, it is not partial to just women, to get screened. Again, we offer free screenings quarterly. I know Dr. Jenga also out here, I think, once a month. We're trying to coordinate that for twenty twenty-five. In any event, we are always available. And again, financial support, which is always sometimes the hardest, whether it's making those ends meet, or meeting the deductibles, or just copayments, we are willing and look forward to serving the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move to our consent agenda. We have two items on our consent agenda. First one is November the twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, City Commission Workshop Minutes. And the second is the November twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, City Commission Meeting Minute. I'll entertain a motion for the adoption of the consent agenda as presented.
Mayor Bab, I move to accept the November twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four Workshop and Commission Meeting Minutes.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bowden and properly seconded by Vice Mayor Mervin for the adoption of the consent agenda item as presented. Call for questions. Hearing none, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Next, we'll move to old business, update of city project, city manager.
Yes, sir. Mayor Commissioner, I'd like Ms. Adams to provide an update on the projects of the city at this time.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission, residents. For our city project update for capital improvement projects for December twenty twenty-four, December the ninth, Phase Four Resurfacing Project, the bid will, opening bid will be held on February third of January twenty-twenty-five here at the chambers at ten a.m. And again, that resurfacing project is for East Fifth Street, MLK, West Fifth, West Third, and we're going to try to get in West Second, but that is contingent upon the bid amounts, the amount of funding that we receive from FDOT is two-hundred-and-ten-thousand. McClure Reconstruction Project, McClure, we're nearing the sixty percent utility design submitted to Palm Beach County by the end of this month. We will begin permitting and the bidding process in February twenty-twenty-five. A community engagement meeting is scheduled for January twenty-twenty-five with Palm Beach County Water Utility and WGI. Design usually takes anywhere from a few months to a year. Again, we got this project in twenty-nineteen due to some delays, but the total project cost is one million one hundred and ninety-four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars. FDOT is only funding nine-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-three dollars, and that is for the design and the construction and CEI costs for the projects. Palm Beach County Water Utility, their ILA for funding contributes eighty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and that funding is for utility design. An extension letter is being submitted to FDOT for this project. The project is scheduled to be completed in June twenty-twenty-five. The project contract, again, is slated in twenty-twenty-five. An extension is requested for the design completion, permitting, bidding, and construction, as well as the closeout. Next, we have FDEP MLK Park Improvement Projects. This project is funded by FDEP, Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and that's for two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand. Twenty thousand dollars of that two-seventy is a match from the city. Those targeted task items, deliverables for this project include fixing of decayed paving, as well as new additional parking, installing playground equipment, outdoor fitness, restore and replace the recreational shelter, install new LED lighting, install a new walking path, remodel the baseball soccer fields, and new seating and the bleachers at the field. And then the extension will be coming forth for this project as well. Capital Improvement Projects, Surtax Funding is for the Parks and Recs Commercial Roof Replacement Building A. They are badly in need of a roof, and that opening bid will be held on Friday the third of January twenty-twenty-five, also here at the Commission Chambers at two p.m. The only individuals that can, that we will be opening bids for are those that were in attendance at the pre-bid meeting. That was a mandatory pre-bid meeting, and in order to submit a proposal, you also had to be available and onsite the date of the pre-bid meeting. ARPA Home Repair, the city has met with the contractor and residents to finalize the remaining services to complete the repairs needed for their homes. We anticipate that final proposals from the contractors for these ARPA Home Repair Program recipients over the next couple of weeks. And so that is in reference to some of those individuals who still had some issues with a former contractor. City Events, the Christmas Parade will be held on Monday, December twenty-twenty-four. The lineup will begin at five fifteen on Laramore, and step-off will be promptly at six fifteen. The parade route will take place Laramore to East Main, East Main to North Lake, North Lake to South Lake, and we will end at MLK Park. If you are interested in participating in the parade, please contact City Hall for application to submit your application. Christmas Toy Giveaway, the toy giveaway will be held on Thursday, the nineteenth of December, from six to eight p.m. here at Parks and Recs. You must be registered. So if you want to, your child, to receive toys, then you have to contact City Hall to pick up an application and to be registered. Again, it is only for those individuals who are registered. The event will take place in our gymnasium, and it will be, with the parent has to be present with the child, the child must be there to receive their gift. And registrations for that will close on Friday, the thirteenth of December. MLK Parade will be held on Saturday, the eighteenth, January twenty-twenty-five, beginning at eleven a.m. The lineup will start at ten a.m. on Laramore. The parade route is Laramore to East Main, East Main to North Lake, North Lake to South Lake, and ending at MLK Park. And again, if you are interested in participating in the parade, please contact City Hall. We're also looking for sponsors for our MLK events. Chamber News, Belgrade Chamber of Commerce, the City Commission is invited to join the Belgrade Chamber of Commerce Monthly Networking Breakfast, and that breakfast will be held on Wednesday, December the eleventh, at seven-thirty a.m. in the cafeteria of Lakeside Hospital. This monthly breakfast is sponsored by Lakeside Medical Center, and Karis Engel from the Glades Initiative will be the guest speaker. The breakfast is free for all Bell, for all Chamber members and their guests, and we are a member. Black Chamber of Commerce of Palm Beach County, new and existing member orientation is in-person training, will be held on Tuesday, December the twenty-fourth, from six to seven p.m., and this is held every third Tuesday of the month. And it will be, it's located at five-sixty Village Boulevard, Suite One-twenty, Number Nineteen in West Palm Beach. And again, this event is also free to existing and new Chamber members. And that is all for my update. Thank you.
If I may add, thank you, Ms. Adams. If I may add, two additional capital improvement projects that Ms. Adams left off the list this evening, that's two signage projects. One, entryway signage, and also the signage for City Hall, as previously discussed and budgeted for this fiscal year. I will make additional comments under my report, provides further information regarding some of the existing projects. But that's it for this, for the updates, Mayor.
Thank you. Now, we move into our public hearings and ordinances. We have one ordinance for second reading, and City Attorney, could you read it into the record?
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, providing for evaluation and appraisal-based amendments to the City of Pahokee's Comprehensive Development Master Plan as required by and in conformity with Section one sixty-three point three-one-nine-one per N-one Florida statutes, providing for inclusion in the comprehensive plan, providing for correction of scrivener's errors, providing for conflict and repealer, providing for liberal construction, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, sir. This ordinance is previously presented and approved under first reading. It is the city's evaluation and appraisal amendments to the city's Comprehensive Development Master Plan. The second reading also takes into consideration recommendation, recommended changes and consideration for future changes by the South Florida Water Management District and the Florida Department of Transportation, specifically as it relates to the water and transportation elements of the plan. Mrs. Height, serving as an extension of city staff near the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, is with us tonight, and will present an overview at this time. At the conclusion of her presentation, and any questions that you or the public may have during the public hearing portion, staff highly recommends approval of the proposed changes to the City of Pahokee's Comp Plan as it pertains to the city's evaluation and appraisal review, and further authorize transmission to the Florida Department of Commerce. Ms. Height.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Stephanie Height. I'm the Deputy Executive Director of the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. It's been our pleasure to work with your city staff and with all of you on this project. So this is something we do every day on the other side, so it's nice to be on the side where you get to kind of make some decisions. Just a quick reminder, the evaluation appraisal process, this is something that state statutes mandate you do every seven years. So it's a look at your comprehensive plan, just to see if there needs to be any updates pertaining to any legislative updates, has anything changed in the legislation that need to be addressed, and then issues of local concerns. And it's a local concern here in the city, in the Glades area, the county, is there anything that needs to be addressed in there? And so there's two parts. There's looking at those legislative changes that need to be done, but then there's also the public outreach part of it. So we did extensive public outreach. We did a kickoff meeting with staff, what, November twenty-three. City Commission meeting, we came and explained the process ahead of time of what we would be doing in December of twenty-twenty-three, a couple of years now, or a year now. Then we did a town hall meeting in January of twenty-twenty-four. We did a digital survey that we sent out and received forty-one responses from residents, which is really a tremendous response. And then we did individual interviews with staff, interested parties, and then each of the commission members. So your comp plan has, this is the two thousand nine comp plan, so you're a little bit behind on the error process, but we're going to be made up for that tonight. You had ten, ten different elements to your comp plan. We were proposed that the public school facilities element be eliminated because there's no longer a requirement in statutes for that public school concurrency, but you're still at ten because there is a property rights element that needed to be added from some legislation in twenty-nineteen, I believe. So we also updated all the data within there, the maps, and then the narratives, because this, because this is your plan that you're looking at as you consider redevelopment and growth and in capital improvements, all of that, we need to make sure that the data was up to date, so you're making good, informed, current decisions. So the public meetings, now this is the, our hearings, to make sure that we meet the statutes. So in July of twenty-twenty-four, we went before your SAC Board and presented them the changes. We did the first reading of those proposed amendments before you in July of twenty-twenty-four, and we transmitted those August first. City staff transmitted those to the state. So what happens then is the state reviews it, state agencies such as the Regional Planning Council, the Water Management District, DOT, the Department of State will review those and provide comments. On September twenty-fifth, you received what's known as an objections, recommendations, and comments report from Florida Commerce. Staff and I reviewed those comments. We looked at what we're presenting tonight is the proposed changes that we felt were necessary at this time to do. So again, Florida Commerce, the only thing in their ORC report was, was a comment, which is very good, that they just wanted us to make sure that you were coordinating with the Florida Department of Transportation and the South Florida Water Management District to address their comments and their concerns. So Florida Department of Transportation had several. We looped these into two categories, so I'm gonna have to look over here. Some of the things they wanted you to do is consider having an element or more language in your comp plan related to resilience and sustainability related to climate change, incorporating information on the state's context classification systems for roadways. They wanted you to include a depiction of existing and future conditions of transportation networks. Now, your maps do meet the standard for what is required, so this is, this is more planning stuff for the future. Add language related to the state's Vision Zero, complete streets policies, coordination with the Complete Streets and Bicycle Pedestrian Coordinator, and then language to pedestrian bicycle outreach and education. And so as we reviewed these, these weren't anything that were necessary to be done right now. And sometimes when you're going to put in your comp plan things, other, you know, reference of the plans like Vision Zero, or the Complete Streets, you, you're not really adopting those, but you want to make sure if they go in your comp plan, that that's really something that you've looked at, you've investigated, do you really want to include that in your comp plan? So the proposed changes addressed, including FDOT as a coordinating partner. We've removed references to major arterials, because that's no longer in the state guidelines or the federal guidelines. We updated the definition of minor arterials. They're in our chart. We didn't have the to and the from of East Main Street, so we updated that. They wanted more coordination with development, with development in the railroad network, and then the access management policy related to the state highway system and the strategic intermodal facilities. And those are the state facilities. So we are proposing, and in your package you have it in green, I believe, a new policy to support better access to state highway systems and reduce unnecessary trips on the state highway system, to go from one business to another and maybe businesses, and then further enhancements will be considered by the city in the future for that. And then also, we add Policy Two-One-Two-Eleven to include FDOT as a reviewer and partner agency in the development of the review process for anything that would impact the state intermodal system or the state highway system. We removed the, yeah, we removed references to major arterial roadways and updated the minor arterial roadway definitions. Table Two-Two, that's the one that didn't have Main Street defined to and from. And then also, we had a reference in there to a map that no longer exists. So pretty, pretty minor things. So I think we did a really good job in the process of making sure that we got the changes, changes done right the first time. South Florida Water Management District, they had two changes that they were proposing, or two comments, we'll say. They wanted us to be aware that they have adopted a new Lower East Coast Water Supply Planning document. So what happens with that, legislation requires that you adopt your water supply facility work plan within eighteen months of a new adoption. So they're just letting us know that, I mean, this won't be due till March of twenty-twenty-six, so you're good right now. And then since you do have Palm Beach County Water Utility Supplies, you're what, we're making sure that their plan and your plan is consistent. So, and then the other thing is, we didn't have in the relevant regional issue section, that deals with withdrawals, service water allocations, construction of storage systems, reclaim, reclaim water usage, and the use of brackish water. So we made sure we put those in there, referencing that those are the concerns, the regional concerns being addressed by Palm Beach County. So what we are asking again tonight, as Mr. Jackson said, we are just asking that you adopt Ordinance Twenty Twenty-four-O-Five on second reading, adopting the proposed amendments, and then direct staff to, to transmit those amendments to Florida Commerce. And that will include, that will conclude the evaluation appraisal report. Once you do submit the adopted, there's a provision that for thirty days, they can be challenged, but if not on the thirty-first day, they will be considered adopted amendments into your comp plan. And I'm available for questions.
Not at this point. What I'll do is open up a public hearing, and if the public have any question, then I'll allow them to ask you those questions.
Absolutely.
At this time, I would open up the public hearing for Ordinance Twenty Twenty-four-Dash-O-Five on its second reading. Are there anyone in the audience who wish to address this ordinance? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing at this time. City Commission, do you have any questions prior to the vote?
I have one question. Can you go back to the previous screen? See where it says this? Did we get a copy of this? And I know you said something is due in March of twenty-twenty-three, just so that the commissioners can be aware and kind of like, you know, to remember that this is due to make sure that, you know, we don't fall behind on it. So do we have a copy of this information?
Yes, all of that's in there.
Oh, I didn't see that.
You should have a copy. I don't know if you've received.
I don't see that.
It's statute, so it's gonna, you know, somebody's gonna remember to do that, to, that it will need to be updated within eighteen months, which would be March of twenty-twenty-six. So, um, that would be something that you would address at that time. Like, if you want, you would be updating your comp plan. Maybe you're doing some other updates at the time. You would have to update the water supply facility work plan. And that's a separate plan, but it's part of your comp plan. So what you usually do is just adopt that by reference into your comp plan, that you're updating that plan.
Is staff is very much aware of the deadlines and the target dates, and anything that requires commission consideration or recommendation approval will be presented in a manner, in a timely manner?
Is that that's it? Thank you.
City Commission, having heard Ordinance Twenty Twenty-four-Dash-O-Five properly read by City Attorney, properly explained by City Manager, properly had a public hearing on the ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mayor Bab, I move to accept Ordinance Twenty Twenty-four-Dash-O-Five.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bowden and properly seconded by Vice Mayor Mervin for the adoption of Ordinance Twenty Twenty-four-Dash-O-Five. Call for questions. Hearing none, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, City Clerk. Thank you, City Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Height. Now, we'll move to resolutions. We have three resolutions. The first resolution is Resolution Twenty Twenty-four-Dash-Fifty-Five. City Attorney.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, approving the city's annual Christmas parade and authorizing an application for a parade permit from the Florida Department of Transportation, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, sir. This resolution recognized and approved the city's annual Christmas parade through a permit process from the Florida Department of Transportation in conjunction with the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office. As presented earlier, this year's Christmas parade will be held on next Monday, December sixteenth, at six fifteen p.m. Staff recommends approval of Resolution Twenty Twenty-four-Fifty-Five.
City Commission, I'm open to entertain a motion for the adoption of Resolution Twenty Twenty-four-Dash-Fifty-Five.
I move that we accept Resolution Twenty Twenty-four-Fifty-Five.
Second. It has been moved by Commissioner McPherson and properly seconded by Commissioner Bowden for the adoption of Resolution Twenty Twenty-four-Dash-Fifty-Five. Call for questions. Hearing none, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Next, we have Resolution Twenty Twenty-four-Dash-Fifty-Six. City Attorney.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, approving budget amendment to number one, in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, as set forth in composite Exhibit A, attached here to, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, sir. This resolution represents the city, city's request for amending its Twenty Twenty-four, Twenty-five fiscal year budget. This request will increase the current budget amount from eight million nine-hundred-thirty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-two dollars to nine million ninety-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars, totaling a difference of one hundred, one-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-two. This difference is represented in multiple categories of ARPA programs, namely minor home repairs at an amount of ninety-three-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-two, and residential repairs at one, one thousand dollars. Both of these categories and amounts were previously approved by the commission and are committed funds that have not been expended. I'll just talk a little bit about this. The ninety-three thousand that I mentioned and the one thousand for the Utilities Assistance Program were already approved by the commission. These projects have not been fully executed, and as you're very much aware, we have to have all ARPA funds committed by the end of this, this fiscal year, which is within a couple of weeks. We have until December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six to actually expend those funds. So these funds are committed, but not yet expended. The balance, the twenty-nine thousand balance are uncommitted funds that we have to transfer, through an inter-fund transfer, and ultimately used to complete and close out the ARPA program. So out of the twenty-nine thousand that's uncommitted, it comes through a ten-thousand-dollar business grant program that's not been committed, and twenty-nine, nineteen thousand in the Utilities Assistance Program. And again, the idea and the need is to transfer these into the city's inter, inter-fund transfer and allow these funds to be utilized and executed by the twenty-twenty-six date. So the goal here is to commit those, these uncommitted dollars. But in the interim, those dollars that were not expended last year are now moved into this year's budget. So that gives a total of the one-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-two, this need of transferring. Budget amount further allows the City of Pahokee to have all ARPA funds committed by the deadline date, again, of the end of this month, and ultimately expend these funds by the deadline date of twenty-twenty-six. Staff recommends approval of Resolution Twenty Twenty-four-Fifty-Six.
Wait for questioning. At this time, City Commission entertain a motion for the adoption of Resolution Twenty Twenty-four-Dash-Fifty-Six.
Mayor Bab, I move to accept Resolution Twenty Twenty-four-Dash-Fifty-Six.
I second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bowden and properly seconded by Commissioner Vice Mayor Mervin for the adoption of Resolution Twenty Twenty-four-Dash-Fifty-Six. Call for questions?
I have a question. Maybe I didn't understand what he was saying. So he said it's one-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-two that we're gonna move, and twenty-nine thousand is, you said, gonna go to Utilities Assistant Program? And the other ten, what did you say it was gonna be for?
No, I said ten thousand would go towards the, the business, business grant. It was a category for grant dollars for business.
Is this for, like, future use? Or is this what we had left over? I guess that's what I'm trying to understand. Is this funds that was left? Is this funds that was left over?
No, these are funds that have not been committed. Ten thousand for the business program and then there's an additional nineteen thousand for the utilities assistance program that had not been allocated or expended.
And so it's gonna be used, I'm just asking for future use?
Yes, it'll be used this fiscal year.
And when you say business grant, what, I'm just trying to understand.
You had, you had several categories of programs under the ARPA funding. And that was one of the programs that were identified.
Okay, so that was twenty-nine and then you say ninety-three thousand for utilities?
No, ninety-three thousand is for the home, minor home repair program.
In the future?
No, those dollars have already been earmarked and allocated and approved by the commission. Those dollars have not been executed. That means that there's a remaining of ninety-three thousand plus minus dollars that is under contract. It's in the process of being completed. Once those projects under the minor home repair program are completed, those dollars will be provided to that program and will be closed out. The goal is, as Ms. Adams indicated a few minutes ago, we, we should be closing out most of those projects within the next two to three weeks. So although we have until twenty twenty-six, the goal is to have those dollars utilized and executed along with the twenty-nine thousand of uncommitted sooner versus than later.
And so then that mean we'll zero out, all ARPA funding has been used up?
At, at the point of the transfer, right to date, there is a hundred and fifty-two thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars. And, and I gave you a different amount earlier, so I'm gonna ask if you can amend it because the resolution states one hundred fifty-two thousand four hundred and thirty-three in the title. So a friendly amendment to that would, would be helpful. But to answer your question, that is the remaining of all ARPA dollars, those that have been committed and uncommitted, with the uncommitted being twenty-nine thousand.
I like this question at this time, then the twenty-nine thousand, no, we're transferring that back into general funds and planning on utilizing it before the end of the ARPA period is over. My question is, what specific area do you project to utilize it in? For instance, I wanted to see, I'd like to see it in infrastructure, in a kind of way that can be added to our roads and streets and crewmen, as just an example. So I'm just trying to see where, what your thought pattern would be before, is it twenty-nine thousand? Where you think we can best utilize that without violating any ARPA funding requirement?
I know in previous meetings, we, we discussed that, that possibility. But after looking into what's needed to complete the minor home repair program, and also we have applications in place that just need to be resolved for the business grant, those dollars will be utilized in those two, two categories. So no new additional categories will be created to use the balance.
I, I still have a question. I'm kind of confused. So even though there was some, some, there were, I guess with the nineteen thousand dollars, he's saying that's gonna be used in the future. So we're saying, Mr. Jackson, you decided and made the decision that, do you, that the nineteen thousand dollars?
Twenty-nine thousand, I believe. Is it nineteen?
Well, that's what I'm saying. But as a commission, are we agreeing to that's how it should be used? Because I thought there were some other more important items that was brought before the commission that we saw that this commission party to me coming that voted on that needed to be taken care of. So are we now redirecting? I mean, I know so many dollars were allocated for the utilities program. And so are we saying now we giving an extension and adding more than what was originally voted on and added? And we're gonna use this additional funding? Because twenty thousand dollar was originally allocated for the business grant. I don't, I'm, so we're giving now an additional ten thousand dollars to make that thirty thousand dollars?
No, Commissioner, if you look on page five nineteen in your backup, maybe that'll help you understand it a little bit better.
Because I guess my question is, so ten thousand was allocated? Because I remember that was talked about. Twenty thousand was originally allocated and we gave, or fifteen, and we gave ten thousand out. So my question is, the remaining that was left, what happened to the remaining that was left that was allocated when it was originally allocated? Is my question. That's what I'm trying to understand, because now we're putting an additional ten thousand.
No, it's not additional. It's the same ten thousand. You, you just mentioned it was twenty thousand allocated. Only ten thousand of the twenty was used. The ten thousand that we're transfer, transferring now is the balance from the twenty. So it's not additional, it's inclusive of the twenty, original twenty.
So I'm, I guess I'm not understanding. Why, why would that be an additional amendment when it had, when twenty thousand was voted on originally?
The amendment is not really, not dealing with the total, with the amount. It's dealing with the time associated with committing the amount. The twenty thousand when originally proposed, when all of the dollars came, came into the city, none of those dollars were committed. They were all uncommitted. You develop programs, you develop initiatives that the commission wanted these dollars to go towards. When you did that, once the program started and the dollars were beginning to be utilized, they then came off of the uncommitted balance sheet to the committed balance sheet. So now what we have now, we've committed all of the dollars, all of the three point four, I think, million dollars, and we only have a hundred and fifty-two thousand left. Out of that hundred and fifty-two thousand, ninety-three thousand of those are committed, but they were not expended last fiscal year. So in order to keep them alive and well and moving, in order to execute those contracts, we have to move those dollars into this year's fiscal year. In addition to that, the twenty-nine thousand that was uncommitted, that's ten thousand from the business program and nineteen thousand from the utilities program, we're transferring that to the general fund to now make those dollars available, to keep those dollars from being pulled back and returned to the federal government. Because if we don't commit those dollars by the end of the calendar year, we lose them. So in order not to lose them, we're transferring them to the general fund to utilize in programs that we didn't commit, that we didn't use from the committed side. So ten thousand of the twenty that you mentioned will be used for the business grant program, and that will satisfy the twenty thousand that was originally committed. Ten from last year, ten from this year. The nineteen thousand is going, is coming from the utilities assistance program that were uncommitted funds. We only committed one thousand dollars, and you may remember a couple of commission meetings ago. From that, we had a difference of nineteen thousand. So that nineteen thousand is gonna be transferred to the general fund to be utilized for that particular program, the minor home repair program. So there's no new dollars. The only thing that we're doing tonight is making sure that we commit all of the ARPA funds.
Okay, so let me just ask a question, because I just want to make sure I'm understanding. The commission voted and there were dollar amounts on each program. They said, I, I don't have it in front of me, I have to look in the binder. Two hundred and something thousand was gonna be for the home repair program. Twenty thousand was going to be for businesses. I just don't remember after all the ARPA funding was spent, that we only was gonna have a balance of a hundred fifty-two thousand. And now you're saying, I guess I, I'm still not understanding, because there were funds that was going to be left over, that there were some projects that the commission wanted to see done. And so you're saying we take and move over the hundred fifty-two thousand dollars. We're committing this money to those programs, but I remember the commission agreed on dollar amounts for previous programs. And if, and I hear what you're saying, but it's not, I guess it's not ma, the numbers are not making sense to me. So the twenty thousand doll, the ten thousand you said is gonna be used in the future, but the program has closed already. There was a deadline that everybody was supposed to.
Hasn't closed. The program has not closed yet.
But that's what this.
Probably closed for new applicants.
New applicants. At certain, at a certain point, the application process ended. Yes.
So these dollars.
So that mean we went over, did we go, because the commission approved a certain amount of money. So my question is, did we go over the amount that was approved? Because I just don't remember when this was discussed, that only a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars is what was going to be left.
To answer your question, no, it did not go over. It's still within the parameters of the original allocation. I'm not sure what, evidently, from what you described, there were other categories of funding that was in place. But evidently, at some point, there were amendments to the program that may have eliminated other programs or may have consolidated. I mentioned, I know one thing, one item for certain, that was a unfunded mandate from the state dealt with the docs D E N F. Those dollars were not anticipated to be used. The ARPA funds were not anticipated to be used for that emergency item. So you're looking at close to a million dollars that were, that could have possibly been allocated for other programs that were not available after the emergency purchases and repairs to doc D E N F. There may have been other similar situations that may have changed the category and the amount of funding. But as of the last seven months, these categories have not changed. And all of these categories are within the total amount that was remaining from the total ARPA funds. Again, without, without being repetitive, we're only trying to make sure that we present a balanced budget at the end of this fiscal year, and that includes any dollars that we're transferring from last year's budget that was not utilizing and executed, in addition to those that we have to commit under our ARPA agreement.
You answered my question. So it was used for the docs, okay? Because that was not originally what I saw on the paperwork that was got. So you did answer my question. It was used in the areas.
I have a question. Make sure that my understanding is correct. So those dollars, we've already have applications that have been committed for those particular dollars. We just moved them so we can finish those projects. I'm, I'm just trying to make, I'm a little bit confused myself.
Yes, sir. For the ninety-three thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars under the minor home repair program, we had a few challenges and issues in, in having that complete by the end of last year. And it, it's been well discussed and talked about with some of the challenges with some of the contractors. So when they were not able to be completed, we're now rolling these dollars over in, in amendment.
To complete those projects?
To complete those projects. No new projects, those same projects. And those projects totaled ninety-three thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars.
And you mentioned about the business grant. Do we already have an application for that?
Yes.
Can citizens apply?
Yes, the application's period is expired. We have an applicant, applicant in line. We, you need to work out a few issues with that application. And that application should be coming forth probably as early as the January fourteenth meeting.
Okay, last, last, my last question about this. So that, that particular ten thousand dollars was left over from the twenty. We only spent, it was twenty, and we spent ten of those already, and this is just the leftover?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Are there any additional questions? Hearing none, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Before you do that, just to make sure the record's clear on the amount, I think the manager was saying earlier to correct it. And so there are. Ms. Manager, you may want to state for the record what you want it corrected to, whether the one fifty-two four thirty-three or the one fifty-two five seventy-two.
I just took a look, a second look at it when, when I received that note. And the title should be changed to reflect the total amount of one hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred and seventy-two.
So if that could be, if that could be a part of the amendment, because it was noticed. So in other words, it was noticed with one fifty-two four thirty-three, but the actual amount is what the body of the document reflects, which is one fifty-two five seventy-two.
Correct.
So moving this amendment?
Yes, please.
Yes. Thank you.
The clerk have that noted. Are there any additional questions?
I just have one more before we move forward. Mad Bab, I'm looking at this from April. So we had four hundred seventy-seven thousand five hundred dollars for the home repair program. So, Mr. Jackson, are you saying that we've used all of it up except for the ninety-three thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's all I want.
Okay.
Let me ask a question. When you're doing the discussion of the resolution, that's only for the commission or is that?
Yes, ma'am. Just for the commission at the discussion period. Okay, hearing no additional question? Are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Mayor Bab.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Next we have the third and final resolution, which is resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-seven. City Attorney.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, approving change order number thirty to the contract between the City of Pahokee, Florida Department of Tran, and the Florida Department of Transportation, FDOT, contract number G dash one seven five three FM four four two zero three zero dash zero one dash five four dash one for the Barfield Highway Reconstruction Project as set forth in exhibit A, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, sir. This resolution has been recommended for approval regarding change order thirty between FDOT and the City of Pahokee. Russell Development has requested and has been granted concurrency by both FDOT and the city for the installation of four traffic loops at First Street and Barfield Highway at a cost of nineteen thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. Staff recommends approval for resolution twenty twenty-four fifty-seven.
Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
May I move that we would have set resolution twenty twenty-four fifty-seven?
Second. It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly seconded by Commissioner Bowden for the adoption of resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-seven. Call for questions.
I have one question. Is this nineteen thousand, City Manager, gonna come out the balance that we have, the hundred? What is it that we have left, a hundred?
Yes, ma'am. It comes from the, the balance. It's approved funding for this particular grant.
Which is, what was the balance again?
I don't have that before me, but I think it's a hundred and sixty-three plus minus thousand.
So they are proving this. I'm just, um, and so it's gonna come out the hundred and sixty-three thousand that we have. Um, so is this gonna affect what we're gonna have to take care of in the end? That the city, you know, what, with those punch items that you were talking about?
We, we won't know that, Commissioner, until we get to that point. What I'm doing now, we're in the process of identifying a punch list after the final lift that may or may not include additional funding from DOT or the city. Those things that have already been approved and paid for, it's on that punch list. We're not expending any more funds.
Oh, they've been paid for already?
The ones that we identify as being paid for and can agree that they, there won't be, we won't be a re cost for that. There may be some that may, I think, or require additional costs. That additional cost will be negotiated and determine whether or not it's a DOT price or it's a city price based on what that punch li, item list is. So I can't tell you tonight that we will have enough remaining after the punch list is exhausted. We may have enough, we may not, we may not have enough. It's hard to say until we've defined that punch list and I, and I, and identify costs associated with each.
Okay, well, I just wanted to, to say for the record, this is why I was asking for an itemized budget of how much we've spent on change orders and how much we have originally spent so that we wouldn't have ourselves in a situation where the city is having. um, where the city is having to come up with a lot of money. And that, that's why I was still requesting, because these change orders, again, are still coming, and I still have a concern about them, and I know I said at the last meeting, and I know that I was asking someone from DOT to come, and I was asking to see paperwork from DOT, but you said there is no paperwork that they sign, you all go into a computer system, and, you know, still, we have, I have this paperwork again, and I still requested to see something from DOT. And I, i- it says staff recommended, but again, I still doesn't see any information for it, so that's just my concern. I know you said nobody from DOT is going to come down, but I, again, I was still asking to see.
I didn't say that.
Paper, you said that's not something they normally do, come and speak to the commission. And so that's why I was asking to see paperwork from DOT where we say that DOT, I know they're paying for it, but you, we get the paperwork saying they approved it, but still, I haven't seen any paperwork, so that's just still my concern with the change orders.
Commissioner Calvin Williams, uh, I know we've had this conversation several times. And I, I reiterate tonight, I will not bring anything to the commission consideration if it's not in line with what we've agreed to with FDOT, the city, and Russell Development. You're asking for processes and, uh, examples that are not germane to, uh, engineering and federal funding, protocol and guidelines. The last commission meeting, we want to step above and ask that someone from DOT sign a letter indicating that it's been approved. We provided that for you, I'm not sure if you remember saying it. The challenges associated with getting, sometimes getting people on the phone, uh, is, is daunting. So every attempt that we, every time we bring something to you, you can very well know that it's well vetted. It's nothing that's, uh, been taken for granted, and I will not present it to you. This recommendation, change order, came maybe about four months ago. And I didn't bring it to the commission, why? Because we didn't have any, all the sign-offs on it. I didn't have all the engineering reports to say that it was something that they agreed to. We didn't have concurrency from FDOT. And now that we've had it, now that we've crossed all those Ts and dotted all those Is, I present it to you. And that's, after everything has already been approved, already been looked at by four different layers of, um, contractors and inspectors. So, outside of, of... No other comments, Mayor.
Thank you.
Question, um, to that same thing. How did you know when DOT approved? Uh, this got, what communication did we utilize to get their approval from DOT? When you come, uh, when we see the documents saying that it's been approved, what do they do, what do they use to notify you? By the city?
What do they use to notify?
Yeah, as far as, um, documentation saying that it's approved. How did you know, you, like, you was waiting on these documents before you can bring it before the commission? What mode of communication do they use to just notify you to that it's been approved, or you can move forward or whatever?
Okay. Ms. Adams, do you care to come forward and explain the portal system to the commission?
Um, Commissioner McPherson, uh, to answer that question, so besides the progress meetings that we have with FDOT, we have monthly progress meetings, sometimes they're weekly. Um, we constantly are in communication, we also have emails, there's also a portal that in order for contractors to be paid, they see all that information. Any change order that comes to you has to be approved, and whether it's email communication, or commu- uh, email conference, or either throughout, through the portal, we upload all of our documents for payments, for communication into that portal. So, when they're, with the packet, the A I, A I A packet that the contractor presents to us, has every piece of documentation in it for the change order, or for any work that's going on for that week, that month, all that is uploaded. And so if there's anything in there that is not consistent with what has already been approved, with what's aligned with the grant, then they do not fund it. But we're in constant communication with FDOT, as well as Palm Beach County Water Utility. And that goes for any project that is funded from grants fund, regardless of what the, uh, funder is, whether it is, uh, FDP, uh, Palm Beach County, meet grants, any of that, we are in constant communication, and they have to approve in alignment, whether it's, again, communication, or, I mean, email, or any of those portals.
So, you're saying they notify you by email or in the portal?
Yes, sir.
That it's approved?
Yes.
There's no way that that?
They have an onsite inspector here on Barfield Highway, that we're in constant communication. We had a progress today, it's Tuesday, right? Progress meeting this morning. FDOT was on that call, so they know that everything that we're doing. And even if it is communicated with him, it is also communicated with his superiors and the top at F D O P, F, FDOT, my apologies.
My question is, that document or that email, and I can understand Commissioner Calvin's concern, um, there's no way that that, just a copy of that can be printed to show?
If I can say, to me, and, and please excuse me, to me, we getting too much in the weeds of day-to-day. You, you, and, and you have to trust your staff. You have your staff that is working diligently to, and, and it's almost like we want the conversation, we want their, their phone conversation, we want their email back and forth. You have to, you have to trust your staff. And you just heard the city manager say that before he brought it to you, he didn't have all of the, the, the signatures, he didn't have all of the, uh, uh, what was needed to bring it to the commission. Either we're gonna trust this staff that, that they're doing their job, or we just need to sit in the day-to-day in the office and listen to the conversation, be on the call. Because you, you have to tr- you can't get, you can't get, and I'm just saying, we're the only ones that want every single document, every phone call that the city staff is doing. You know, you have to trust your staff. Either we, either we trust what they're saying, or we, or we don't. It's like, it's like, we just, we sitting, we nitpicking every little, every little, little, little thing that's, that, that's there, you know, it's, it's like, really, really.
Okay, with all due, I can finish. With all due respect, Commissioner Mervin, when I'm asking questions, it's for my knowledge, so I can make the best of decision for our citizens in the city. This is not trying to get involved, no, 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 I'll let you, I'll let you finish, so, let me finish. With all due respect, when I'm asking questions, it's, like I say, it's for me be, to be able to have all the knowledge that I need to make the best decisions for the city, and to understand the process. It's not to get involved in anything, it's for us to make the appropriate decisions that need to be made to move this city forward.
And with all due respect, I think that's what all five of us up here are, are doing, trying to make the best decision. And, um, we get these packets, and, um, some of the same questions that we ask here, we could go into the office every day and ask these questions, but we reading, we reading the documents, and yes, there are gonna be some questions, I understand that. And, but we reading the documents, we reading, um, the, the cost is covered by, we reading what we recommended, the engineer, the signature. We're reading everything here on, on the document, reading the cost of the document. But now, we're even asking now for, okay, well, city manager, give me your conversation that you had with them. That's what we're asking him, give me your conversation that y'all had in y'all progress meeting. So, to me, to me, to me, so to me, after the, after his meeting, after his progress meeting, that's when they do, do up the phone. So to me, this is, this is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Manager, this is the conversation from the, from the F-Dot. Because once they sign off of, this is their conversation. They saying that I will approve this. Am I not, am I, am I missing something? Am I incorrect, Mr. City Manager, please correct me if I'm wrong?
Oh, you're, you're correct.
Mayor Bab, may I make a comment?
Let me finish. Again, I'm gonna ask all the questions until I'm satisfied. I don't care what another commissioner do, my job is to do what I think is best for the city. And if I have questions, um, I, I, I ask the question because I want to have the knowledge to understand what the process is. Maybe I might get a little bit detailed, and it's not, you know...
I, I think it's fine to ask questions, as, as Vice, Vice Mayor suggested. The questions, I don't have any issues at all with the questions. But I do have issues with, um, policymakers, um, have an impact on day-to-day operations. And I know you, I know that's, may not be your intent, but that's exactly what is happening. And you have to be very careful as policymakers not to interfere with the day-to-day operations. It's a very fine line.
Mayor Bab, I have a, no, no, I need to speak, Mayor Bab, in regards to this. Um, I'm not involved in day-to-day operations, and maybe, and maybe, I'm getting an understanding, because maybe we got the money back in two thousand nineteen. If a lot of the projects, and we were getting, not getting, um, many extensions that's coming before this commission, as Vice Mayor Mervin is saying, we're acting as if we don't trust staff. So I guess, things have been happening in the city, we've lost funding. And so I guess if we are not asking questions, then we would never know. So it's as if, oh, you just get up here and say yes, and move forward, and don't take care of the city business. I'm asking if the information and the documents are provided, I'm not getting involved in day-to-day operation. Why not put the documents with the paperwork? If the document is being provided to you, I don't understand what's the big secret, or what it is that staff can't be provided the information. All I'm asking for is to see documentation. I want to be able to make good, sound decisions for this city. I'm not getting involved in day-to-day operation. Maybe I'm not as privileged as other commissioners, I work throughout the day. So I don't get to be in City Hall all the time, or to walk the streets with, um, DOT. I'm at work, so I'm not out talking with them. Yes, I get these documentations, I do. But I'm new up here as being a commission, and I don't understand what's the kickback, or what's the problem with provide the commissions with the documentation that they're asking for to ensure a proper job is being done right now. The city is had, we've been, okay, well, not me, change order's been getting approved, we now have to pay for asphalt. The city, did the commissioners up here prior to me see that coming? DOT is not going to pay for it, but we didn't get into paperwork why they are not paying for it. We just was told that DOT is not paying for the asphalt. And that's my concern, we were given three point eight million dollars, and now the city is having to pay money out of their pockets to fix a road that we were giving three point eight six, eighty-six, eight million dollars for. That's my concern. And so no one is gonna explain or tell me how to be a commission, because I'm gonna make the best decisions for the city.
We have a motion in a second. If it relates to the motion, the question, even the city manager says it's appropriate to ax them, so we're gonna do that, allow that, so we do have a motion in a second. Are there any additional questions? Here and now, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin Williams?
No.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Mayor Bab.
Yes, motion passed by a majority of forty-one vote. And that's, take care of the resolutions. Now we move to new business, presentation of the city manager of activities of upcoming events, if any. We got four listed here, and just for information purposes, he has the commissioner or mayor, whoever made the motion to add this to our future agenda item, that's why your name is on here, but he will lead us in discussion, of course, you would have some input of anything that need to be added or said, uh, city manager.
Yes, sir, thank you. The first is the Christmas holiday decoration contest. I know there was some conversations about trying to get that up and running this year. And there also was some suggestions and recommendations that, that dawned through the beautification committee, which I think is an excellent idea. Uh, due to the time restraints, I'm recommending, uh, and encouraging the resurgence of the beautification committee. And oh, them, al- allow with the representative from the commission to create criteria for this and other programs to begin in twenty-twenty-five. That's my recommendation. And I know that's a matter, I think, that you brought, Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Are we saying we're gonna try to move this forward this year, or not? I just want to be clear on your recommendation.
I'm recommending not this year because of the lateness of it. Um, I think you can do one, but how effective, I'm not a hundred percent sure, because I, I was unable to find any criteria from past years. I looked through the, uh, files, and I think if, if you're gonna have a viable, uh, program, we need, need to establish some criteria and guidelines for it.
Okay, I would say this, I believe we should, if we have the ability to move forward, maybe not so much with the beautification committee, but for instance, it could be the commission decide to be the judges of who they feel is the first, second, and third. Or if not the, uh, commission, maybe an apartment in our own com- uh, city, say like, uh, Public Works, because they're out on the community doing cleaning and maintaining our streets and maintaining our communities, so it necess- now, don't necessarily have to be the beautification committee. I think in the future, we can get some criterias, and make sure that whatever we'll decide to do is have some criterias in, there are no, uh, thought of maybe this was a misjudge event. I think four or five individuals can go around in the community, select who they feel is the top, uh, candidate, and we can move from there. That's just my suggestion, we may not be able to do it with the timeframe, but I think if we do it in another means other than the beautification committee, we can do it. Even administration can do it. It doesn't matter who does it, to me, it's just to bring back some of the spirit of Christmas and being able to decorate your home and awarding those who have put in the time and effort, some type of, uh, gift or benefit from it.
Okay.
And I need to hear from others too, how they feel, or what they feel we should be doing, or if we need to do it. As long as suggestion from, uh, one person, but I think we all, since it is a great idea, something we should consider doing, if not this year, maybe in the future.
I agree with you, Mayor Bab, that we should do something this year, what you've described.
All right, um, in addition to that, do you have any suggestions on how we should be able to, uh, rate it? Should it be a s- a staff committee, the commission should do it, I'm just trying to get some ideas on who you feel, or who we feel as a whole?
I think the commission, I think the commission should do it as a whole.
Commissioner Bowden, any thoughts on how we can pull it off or do this?
I have absolutely no thoughts on how to pull that off.
Commissioner Vice Mayor Bowden, uh, Mervin?
Well, you have the, um, code enforcement that rides or ri- well, they don't ride at night, so I don't know, how will you even, who's gonna ride and look at the house and get the address? Who's, who's gonna do that?
Who's ever doing the judgment? If you see a, a, a place that's really decorated, first you want to make sure you got the proper address and even the owners of it.
So that mean you rather ride at night, because most times the lights are on?
Doing the, it'll have to be some, like, dark, so you can see the lights come on. But yes, you would, you would have to do it somewhere in the evening, kind of.
I, I don't know. I don't, I don't really ride at night, so.
Any, any thoughts, Commissioner McPherson?
I'm good.
All right, I'd say this year, let, let, let the commission, uh, do the judging, we'll, can come up with a time, we wanna go out, and you don't need to go out together, you can actually, at your convenience, look throughout the community, take a picture of the three houses you feel is the best three, and we'll get back at some point, and it don't, the prize, the winner don't have to be announced uh, prior to Christmas, or even after Christmas, at our very next commission. or even after Christmas at our very next commission meeting.
So just bring the picture back of the, of the house?
Right, and try to make sure you get the address so you know what house. And we'll look at those photos and chose from there who we feel are the top three uh persons in this contest. And we'll make some more uh concrete uh requi- requirements.
So you want that by when? Because the next commission meeting is gonna be till, I think, what, January?
January fourteenth is the regular, next regular scheduled meeting.
Yeah, we can do it at our next reg- commission meeting in January.
So when I have them?
But that don't even want to have the contest. And as soon as we do know who's the winner, we can at least announce it or put it on the webpage or somewhere that the community should know who. And they can pass by as good if we can do it prior to uh Christmas. So people should know.
A criteria?
Yeah, and look at it and say, yeah, I can see how that would end up being the number one and the number two or whatever.
But we can show the picture of the house like they did on screen.
Yeah, like we do the yards, yeah, yeah.
I know you had discussed a, an amount for first, second, and third. Have you given any more thought to that?
No, I would consider like a hundred dollars for first place, fifty dollars for second place, and twenty-five for third. They wanna get amount that we was outside of budget, we didn't originally have. So just to be conservative, I thought that was a good figure, a good amount. Any, anybody got any thoughts on the uh, the amount? In your input, uh, city manager, you think, I mean, from your staff, you you feel they can do it during the day? Or you think the commission as a whole should be the ones who make the judgment? And those who don't send in pictures in, I mean, no one is forcing anyone to participate, but if you don't send in the pictures, then we have to go with what we have and whoseever, you can still decide on who you think was the top one and three. So we'll, we'll make, we'll make it work. We'll make it work this year. We'll, we'll move to the uh.
I I would suggest that that's a good idea, the way that you just described it, if the commission's gonna do it on a, on a short term. But I would suggest that if, and you're taking pictures in your submissions, that you have permission from those property owners that you're gonna be presenting their homes and photos because it could be a situation where they don't wanna participate or don't want it, their information shared. So I would recommend doing that if, if you decide to use that process.
Shake an input.
Yes, sir. Go to number two. Okay, uh, the state of the city address. Again, I think this is one of yours, Mayor Bab. Uh, if you could, our guys can discuss a date and a location. We'll go ahead and start working that uh to make it a reality. You mentioned the first of the year, I think, when you brought it up at last commission meeting.
Yeah, most, most state of the uh city addresses are done in the beginning of the year, on January sometime. But I wanted to really look at your availability of doing it and the timeframe it gonna take you to put together your presentation. Of course, you wanna invite key stakeholders. So you wanna have a time where the community and the key stakeholders can be there and witness the uh uh address. I think the last time we did it was in Wellington and that was about maybe three years ago. Uh, and we have, I know previous city manager, I think Chandler Williamson did two of them. I don't think uh Mr. Lucas nor Greg Thompson had an opportunity to do any. So we're kinda off on what is normally a tradition. I just wanna make sure we're able to bring it back because that's showing and showcasing the city, the goals and what we're accomplishing and what we're planning on accomplishing in the upcoming year that we will be in. So you would have a real big impact on when you think you and your staff can put that together. And of course, the commission will be there. Normally, I would do like the greetings on behalf of the city and you have others maybe involved in the program, but you would be the featured person that this would be done.
Okay.
I think the last time we had it here, we had refreshments, we had a big tent. It was a community event. It's a reason to get excited, to know where we're going and where we're being.
Okay. Based on what you described, we're probably gonna need a couple of months just to get the invites out and get people confirmation. So I I would prob- I would suggest maybe mid-February as a, as a target. It's in the first quarter of the year, of the calendar year, which is not too far away from. So I, that would be my suggestion and recommendation.
And there's always any, any input from the, that's anything that you wanna think of that we could be doing or should be doing or I think we all can agree with that.
Okay. Now, you mentioned that you, you've done it in Wellington in the past.
Yeah, it was a uh joint uh state of the uh city address. I think the western region at that particular time did it. Each of the city manager or the mayor, because you do have some uh
Strong.
Strong mayors that they, they presented. Yeah, so. And that was just a suggestion. We only did that one time that I'm aware of it, but previously we did our own. So either way, we get it done, that's the biggest thing. And when you're doing it home, you have your home audience able to be in witness it. I don't even think it was live stream when we did it in Wellington.
Okay. And the next item is use of vehicle, city vehicle policy. And that was requested by Commissioner Colin Williams. Um, what I was able to do, and I'm not sure if you've all received it, I emailed you copies of the existing vehicle policy. The policy was last amended and updated as of September twenty twenty-three. So it's over going on fifteen months ago. And in that update, it's also reflected in, in the city's handbook, which you have a copy of. That was um last approved, it updates May twenty-eighth of, of this year. The city uh vehicle policy, uh, done a thorough review. Have also asked the human resource department to do a review. And we do have a few suggested changes, but those changes are more so in line with um some of the reporting mechanisms and processes. But for the most part, the policy is, is uh, it's been used, it's, it's effective. It's something that uh I consider that's being used in a way that it should be used. There are there abuses, I'm sure. But is, is it anything that's uh, that's causing any issues or challenges? We also met with the city's insurer um week and a half, two weeks ago, and we discussed and talked about in detail uh vehicles and fleet uh equipment under the city's policy. And there was really no outstanding issues as it relates to uh the city vehicle policy. The only thing that we had some concerns and questions about was previous incidents that uh we're still trying to find some uh resolution on as it relates to wrecked vehicles. But I say that to say that the policy is in place, is something that we utilize every day. Uh, it's outlined in a way that's very descriptive and describes uh the do's and the don'ts, provides the purpose, the statement, all of those areas that you've approved or previous commissions approve as late as September of twenty twenty-three. I'm not sure if you have any specific questions or uh any suggestions or recommendations at this point.
I would say this, I knew we had a uh vehicle take-home policy. We even requested one, I guess, two, three years ago and it was put in place. I think most of the criteria and guidelines are effective, but we need to make sure that they're being abided by. I look at take-home ve- uh vehicles, it's not so much a benefit, but a part of a requirement needed for the job. Some, some cities and some companies use it as a benefit for the employee. I think we basically distinguish it's not so much a benefit, but such as a need. Uh, we got take-home vehicles that being taken home. We have to really look at and say, is this necessary for the function of the uh individual staff performance or their job? And some say that it should be a twenty-four hour need. And here in Bahoke, I know it may change here and there, but in most cases, it's not directly a twenty-four hour need. If you had a facility where you can park the vehicles and staff is able to utilize them if they assign a vehicle, but once they leave the employment, they put it in a gated area where they're not necessarily taking it home each day. And I can see where, where they going, maybe to a conference uh on s- uh Monday morning or whatever. And then I have time to uh check out a vehicle. In that instance, you may have the vehicle overnight or you in a conference overnight, you may have it. But I'm looking at as much limitation that it don't hinder their work performance because of beyond is, and you may or may not be aware of it, even the last four city managers have had accidents in city vehicle. One even had two. I'm talking the last five city managers, that's a lot. And if not so much that the vehicle was damaged so much, but your insurance and your liability because of a, 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 a accident gonna be costly at some point to you as a city. So I'm just trying to cut down on some of that as much as we can and then be fair and equitable to staff who are utilizing vehicles. There have been some conversation where vehicles have been driven all over, even on weekends. So we just have to make sure that we get a, 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 a good grasp on that and make sure that that policy is not being abused.
Yes, sir.
If we can do that, I think we'll be in, in good shape. So at least we have the policy and I'm encouraging everyone to look o- over it. And if there's any recommended changes, maybe at some future meeting, we can look at that and, and discuss what necessary changes that may be able to be done and need to be done in our policy.
Okay. I would, I would, just looking at the title, uh, it kinda jumps out at me that, that needs to be changed. This is not a city of Bahoke vehicle take-home procedure. This is a city of Bahoke vehicle policy. The take-home is just one small component of the total policy. So I would, you know, at the point of, of making changes, I would recommend that change. And just to highlight some of the things that you mentioned a minute ago to let you know that these things are embedded already in the policy. And the enforcement side has been strengthened and we making sure through HR and other mechanisms that they are, are he- adhered to. And, and yes, I am aware of, of the vehicles that have been damaged or, or wrecked. But take-home twenty-four hour vehicles, I think that's the, the bulk of the conversations from last meeting and this one at this point. And that, you're right, Mayor, there are only aligned to uh staff that are considered employees or assigned on a twenty-four hour basis um based on their job duty and description. And we have language here that suggests that they meet all the criteria uh for, for the same, for full duty. Job classification or positions subject to after-hours. Those people that are on staff that are called out on a twenty-four hour, very short notice and requires a response. Those people are normally um public works and uh other assigned individuals and department heads. But the uh, the thing that I wanna reiterate again is that none of these things happen in a vacuum and none of the s- uh circumstances and scenarios are just by chance. All of these um areas have to receive approval from the city manager. So they, if there's required to have that, they just can't go to the fleet and get a, a key and take a car home. All of that would have to be approved by the city manager. There are also some maintenance criteria in here that must keep. Also, uh, it's, it's a constant check. It's not just a one-time deal, a one-time thing. And if you, if you get a chance to, to delve deeply into the policy, you, you'll get an opportunity to understand that it, it is a very sound policy. And we, we just have to make sure that on the enforcement side, that is ad- adhered to. Commissioner Colin Williams, I know you, you brought this as a um, as a matter. Do you have any, any comments, concerns?
I don't have any comments because I don't have the policy to read, so I can't comment, thanks.
You didn't receive the policy?
I'm looking now. I don't see it.
Ms. Clark, what date you sent the uh agenda out in a package? Email, I believe.
Um.
So Ms. Calvin, if you pull it up?
You're onto this particular policy?
No, you act, okay, the policy, the policy was in email though, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it should have been in there.
But the policy was sent today at twelve nineteen P M.
Oh, twelve nineteen, okay.
And the, and the policy again is in the employee handbook, which you've had at least since May of twenty twenty-four. The latest version.
But one, one thing we did say that, you know, hopefully his staff and commissioners will be able to look over this and any recommendation, we can at least bring it back at another time to look at and review.
We're supposed to get the agenda five days prior to the meeting and all the documents.
This particular, the policy's information?
I, I didn't hear what you're saying.
No, I'm saying the policy being sent was just information. This wasn't a part of the package.
Part, yeah, correct. And the last one that's on, I think it dealt with the the facilities use agreement application. It was Commissioner McPherson, if I'm not mistaken, requesting.
Yes, Mr. Pherson.
Yes, one thing about me, I, I believe in being transparent. And one of the things I, I, I hear a lot of different complaints about the um, our different facilities. Some people are able to get it, some people have, don't have to pay. And, and I don't know if all of these stories are even true, but one of the things I would like to see, that we put our policy and even when the applications for if we're gonna be renting the gym or if we're gonna be renting the cafeteria, that information should be readily available on our webpage so the citizen can see and everybody can be aware of it and know exactly what the policies are before they're not just us as commissioners. It should be available for the citizens to be able to at least as far as the application process. And that way, we can eliminate those different complaints and when we know that we're doing things. And one thing about policies, policies are only as good as the people that follow them. And I said that to say, you know, we just need to have a level of, to, to keep down those different complaints or, or gripes or different things that comes up. It's a lot easier to address it if you get ahead of the game and say, and hey, and the information is available. Maybe we might need to look at some of those policies, um, and whatever, according to the insurance. And of course, we have to have our attorney um look at everything before we make any decisions on it. And we need to make any suggestions as far as making those policies concrete and making And we need to make any suggestions as far as making those policies concrete and making necessary changes, so we can all be on the same page, and the citizens can understand, have a clear vision.
Commissioner, just as in the policy that was described before, the policy was adopted, drafted, approved for legal sufficiency from the very beginning, and this last iteration of it was approved by the commission, I think it was July of last year. And in that approval, it was a couple of amendments to change some of the terminology and some of the sections of the application, if I'm not mistaken. The application is, isn't a problem. The most, most people that come and apply to use city facilities, ninety-five percent of them don't have any challenges or issues. Those few that I've encumbered and had issues with were those that didn't wanna pay, and they found every reason under the sun to find something wrong with the process. The application as it stands is a good application, it's self-explanatory, it provide all of the sections that should be completed, it give timelines, when things are due, it spells out the insurance requirements, it spells out the responsibility for security, so there's no issues with the application. Again, ninety-five percent of the people that apply to use the city facilities don't have any issues at all.
My concern is, like I said, I would like to see it on the webpage, and that can eliminate, if they see they don't have all the necessary documents or what they need, that would even eliminate them coming up there wasting the city paper getting the application, if all that information is available on the webpage. And so one of the things I was thinking about with the policy, which I gotta get a chance to go through it in detail later on this week, when we have people, or we have nonprofits that maybe just wanna do something for free in our community, I think we need to try to do all we can, need to do to work along with those people. And, and like I said, I don't know what's true and what's not, and I'm not accusing anybody of anything, but what I'm trying to do is put us in a position to do the best job that we can as a commission, as, as city staff.
What do you recommend that we do?
Well, one of the things we can make the application, even the information that they need, make it available on their webpage. So if, hey, I wanna rent this facility, I can look it up on the web and say, okay, I need this, I need this before I even come. And if there's time constraints, that'll give them time to prepare for that, instead of coming and getting the application a few days, a week or so before the event.
Okay.
And if they need to get necessary documents, that can make that information available to them.
Okay. We can, we can have that done as early as tomorrow. Is there any other recommendation you suggest?
No, I have to have time to look through the entire policy to make any other recommendation on it.
Okay.
Mr. Jackson, where can we find that policy?
The policy was approved, Resolution twenty twenty-three thirty-eight. Again, it was emailed to you today, I can re-mail it to you tonight.
It was sent at twelve forty-four PM today.
Four forty-four.
Twelve forty-four.
Twelve forty-four. And I'll, I'll do even better than that, I'll give you my copy. I kinda jibble on the front page, but it's captured in Resolution twenty twenty-three thirty-eight.
This is something I was afraid of hearing.
July of last year.
And as commissioners, we are the policymakers, and we need to make the process as easy as possible. You know, I'm not saying who we gonna approve or deny, but we need to just make it as simple and as easy as possible.
Let me just kinda walk through what happens when someone comes in and asks to rent a facility, and we get a lot of requests for a lot of different reasons. But the things that we look at first and foremost is availability, depending on the location, whether or not it's available that day, whether it's on a weekend, whether it's at night, whether or not it requires security. And if we're able to identify all of those things, first we say, yes, it is available. If you wanna rent, we have an application process that you must complete. Recommend that you come in, or we email applications out to those that are interested. Once they receive the information, there's times certain that they have to do different things. First and foremost, if you're interested in renting a facility, you have to come in and you pay a deposit at least two weeks in advance of that activity date. Okay, once that's done, we need to determine if we need to have staff present or available, or any preliminary things that may need to be done at any one of those sites to make sure it's available and ready. The application process, depending on the use, also requires a level of insurance, and the insurance, special event rider is required, you have to have one million dollars worth of coverage, and name the city as an additional insurer on that policy, that covers the city from a liability standpoint. Also, there, if there's any other request and needs for audio equipment, whether or not staff needs to be there to open or close if it's after hours, all of those things are considered. If you meet all of the criteria, you pay the fee, you reserve the spot, you present your insurance information, you're approved to use the facility. If you fail in any of those areas, if you're not timely, if you don't present all the documentation, if you don't pay the fee, then you don't get the facility. And we kinda explain why if someone is not, if it's not, first if it's not available, then we try to work with on an alternate date. But in order to have the facility used, we have to check all of those boxes off. We can't skip one, we can't skip three, we can't skip any, because when you do that for one, you have to do it for one. So I don't set precedent by allowing anybody to get around the process. One of the things that I've been very strong on, and you've probably heard me say it time and time again here, you have to follow the process. When I came, that wasn't in place. Very few processes were followed. Since, since I'm here, and I'm holding strong to that, and making that a part of what, how we operate and how we should operate, again, ninety-five percent of the people say, okay, I didn't understand, now I understand, you explained it, so we're good. But there's that five percent who may have used it in the past and skipped box two and three, now still feel they can skip box two and three, which I'm not gonna allow as administrator. That's where you're getting your concerns and complaints about. I'm willing to work with anybody, any organization, any individual, any family to make the facilities application process smoother and better for everyone. That's how the process works in a nutshell.
Commissioner Bowden had a question earlier.
No, it's never been. I'm good.
Okay. That will take care of the new businesses that we add, I expect to be put on the future agenda item, at least at this point. We have discussed these four areas. Next is the report of the mayor. I would like to at least acknowledge that the City of Pohokee will be hosting the Palm Beach County League of Cities Annual Networking Holiday Barbecue on December, Friday, actually Friday, December thirteenth. December thirteenth is normally not a great day you would look at, Friday the thirteenth, but we know this year is gonna be a great event, and as always, we look forward to hosting the various cities around Palm Beach County. And if you haven't had an opportunity to come out to the barbecue, that's some finger-licking good food. It's a great, great event, a lot of networking, and hopefully we are able, as we have done in the past, some of our key stakeholders, those especially that assist in funding us in various events, or at least invited to that event. I know it's limited, and it's certainly limited to normally elected officials and a county official, but I don't know all the ins and outs of the invitation part of it, but we'll be hosting it along with Belle Glade and South Bay, but we're the primary hosts because it's been here in Pohokee this year. Also like to mention, we went to a legislative conference last week, which I thought was a great event, a lot of information that was available to the attendees. One of them I particularly paid attention to was one of the legislative persons who was in Tallahassee talking about our legislative projects and our funding. And one of the thing that he suggested that it's good to attend the legislative meetings in Tallahassee, but it's not the most important process, the one that he felt was most important is you contact your district, district representative people who are in your district to have one-on-one with them. The reason being, when you go up there in Tallahassee, we all get appointments and see these legislators, but you'll normally have like five to ten minutes, and they're in and out of conference, they on a time clock, they're listening to you, but they're really not listening to you. That's the takeaway from that.
Yes.
Because the time is so short. But if you make an appointment, say to the Senator in Palm Beach, what's his name?
Harold.
Harold.
Harold. And you wanna make a point with her, you got maybe an hour or two to sit down and really talk to her about your projects and what you're trying to accomplish, and to get her buy-in and support versus going up there on the week of, and you just don't have that one-on-one that you need to have, where everybody's being busy getting in and out of the various meeting. But the key part of that is, we always have, and we will continue to leave our policies and our legislative projects requests in writing, so they have time to look over it thoroughly to see what they can support, or what they feel that may be if. Another area was to determine what Tallahassee's funding up there. You know, for instance, is the big buzz is good water quality, and you want parks, and they may have funded parks millions of times, that may not be the best project to go for. So just choosing the projects right, and knowing what's the buzzword in Tallahassee of the thing that they most likely would support. Even the governor, he has the ability to veto any legislation that come out of there, whether the legislators approved it or not, that's strong, that's more powerful than one person should have, but he have a line item veto that he can do. And I think the last two years, that has happened to Pohokee, where we was able to get in a request, and it was vetoed by the governor. So all of those things need to be taken into some consideration, but we do need to have some strategy early on of what we're gonna do and how we're gonna do it, because we have to get a legislator from the House side and the Senate to sponsor those bills.
Right.
You know, so we got a little work to do for us for this session again, and we gotta strategize how we can best get it. Hopefully, we're not gonna give up and say, we're not gonna get funding. That's faith, and that's hope. We always gotta have those two. So we're gonna go up there this year again and try to get some funding for this city. Two years in a row, it's, it's, it's gonna, the well is gonna dry, it's not already dry, so let's get ready to roll up our sleeve and do whatever we can to change the narrative in Tallahassee about who we are and what we stand for, and why these projects are so much beneficial to our total community.
Yes, sir. Informational purposes, Mayor and Commission, we had, I forget exactly what, what the venue of the meeting was, but it was recommended that we try our very best to get Senator Harold in the City of Polkay and look at our projects this month.
This month?
Um, I immediately, yeah, I immediately contacted Senator Harold's office and made, made attempts to see if we can get her in Polkay. As you probably well know, she chairs the Palm Beach County Legislative Committee, and her schedule is completely booked, maybe through the first, up until, actually up until session starts. I am in communication with her staff, and as soon as she has an availability, she, she will be in the City of Polkay to look at some of the projects. I encourage, and I will pass along her contact information, her office person for each, each and every one of the members of the commission, so you in turn can start having some of those conversations based on, you change the legislative priorities that we presented during the county's meeting, if you wanna adjust those to maybe focus and concentrate on three or four, based on what you've just suggested. And then we push those three or four items through her office and with her office. And I think that would be, be very good to, if she was hearing from not only city administration, but cities, elected officials in that venue, because you guys can talk to elected. So I'll, I'll pass that on to you as early as, as tomorrow, but I do want, I do, I did want to let you know that I have been in communications with her office.
Now, Senator Harold, we more than likely, we know we'll have her supported for the Senate, but in the same token, we have to be thinking also, who's on the House side, would we get to sponsor our legislative projects in Tallahassee?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And again, the last thing is, as we mentioned, Senator Har, Harold, we, we need to do something, I need to do something, this commission need to do something as a whole to show our support and gratitude to her, maybe a proclamation of all her past support, because even she has a picture of some type of scene in Pohokee. She have it on her wall, I don't know if she still have it, but that just show her commitment to Pohokee, that when folks were coming in, going out, they saw that Pohokee was being represented by her and were represented very well. So that's something that we can do at some point, whether it's the state or city address or whenever, you know, give her maybe a proclamation for her past support.
If I may, I know one of the, one of the thing that she was asking when, when I went to her offices, she was asking like for a plaque of every city that she represents, like, say like the City of Pohokee sign right here.
Right.
That's what she's asking for, if she can get one of those to put on her wall.
Right.
Because she got everybody but the city of Polkay.
And I don't think it'd have to be as large as there.
Yeah, it was not, no, they're, they're small.
Yeah, she's not gonna be able to put a big one up there. Yeah, that's a good thing, that could.
Mayor, you know, they were also, you know, they also gave us what the House and the Senate, what they're focusing on, and they said that whatever projects that we have to do, take a second look at them and make sure they're projects that are shovel-ready, because if they're projects, they gotta go through the design phase and need engineering and all of that, those are projects that probably will not be funded this upcoming year. So they said, take and only submit maybe three, ones that are shovel-ready activities, I mean shovel-ready projects, because if they are not, they're, they're all probably not gonna go through. Based on, they told, you know, when they gave us the, and I took pictures of all of them, what their priorities are in the Senate and the House, because she did give us some information about the governor, but not exactly. He hasn't talked about what his priorities are yet, but a lot of them are heavily with water, agriculture, is what they gave us, and housing.
Thank you for the, all the, but that would conclude my report. Next we have the report of the city manager.
Yes, sir. Mayor, Commission, I have a request of either the mayor or a majority of the commission to schedule a special meeting on, next Tuesday, December seventeenth, to address end-of-the-year calendar emergencies and deadlines, in the place of our previous council meeting that coincides with Christmas Eve. As you know, that meeting has been canceled, but there's a need to do, continue to do some additional business before this calendar year ends. And a tentative agenda for this special meeting will include requests for time extension for Barfield Highway Project, requests for time extension for Phase Four paving. requests for time extension for Phase Four paving. You've heard both of those earlier tonight, that those would be in need of extension. Requests for time extension for MLK Park. Approval of annual audit for fiscal year ending 2023. The audit is ninety-five percent complete as of this past Friday. And staff is working through final drafts over the next few days. So that, again, we're trying to make sure that audit is approved before the end of the year. So we eliminate any issues or challenges with the state. We also will consider FDOT parade application for MLK Parade that's scheduled for January. And also take a look at the commission's schedule for 2025. And just as an aside, just wanted to ask if this was ever considered or if there's any consideration around meeting once a month versus twice a month. And it's just a question, it's not a recommendation. And the reason I ask is that we're always in the posture of preparing for a commission meeting. When this commission meeting ends, we have at least six, seven items to be considered, plus those things that you're recommending for future agenda items. And it's very difficult to get that processed through staff over to legal in enough time for her to take a look at it for legal sufficiency and not be put in a situation where you don't get the information. I heard Commissioner Calvin Williams refer to the policy that was passed some years ago about getting your documents five days in advance. It becomes very, very difficult to do that. You're only required to meet once a month. So I just wanted to put that out there to see if there's any consideration. And those are the items that will be held. But I would need either you the mayor or the majority of the commission to approve a special meeting for next Tuesday.
Yeah, if that's concurrent of the commission, we'll do that now today in this meeting and it'll be done. So it wouldn't have to be a special call meeting of the mayor. So if I'll entertain a motion that we would have a special call meeting with the items that the city manager listed. Because it's a special call meeting, you can't go outside of those areas. So if anything else on there you would like to see on there, at least put it on the table so we can consider adding to that agenda, particular agenda.
Wait, is the meeting you asking for December seventeenth?
A week from tonight. Yes, ma'am.
So this would be our future item agenda would be on this meeting also?
No.
So this would be just a special call meeting?
What I'm recommending is just the items that we just mentioned a minute ago. Because there's still quite a bit of work to make these happen in two days.
So you had two questions? One about the, so you had two questions. This was about the special call meeting?
Correct.
Then you want, okay.
I have a suggestion. Since we have Palm Beach County Days, I'm thinking, could we add to that special meeting? We need to look at our priority list that we're gonna present to the legislators and as a commission. So we all be on the same page, even if we have to downsize that or even make the decision to try to submit whatever we have already. I would like to add that to the agenda. So we can have our priority list. And we all be on the same page when we go in to talk with the legislators and our representatives.
And I'll say, you know, I think this is kind of something that we've discussed over multiple meetings. And, you know, I feel like we should definitely discuss the city manager's contract in that meeting. So if we can add that, I would like for us to do so.
Ask a question. The changes that we already had recommended on the contract, did you already have opportunity?
Yes, sir.
So again, so this won't be, this is special call meeting. It won't be like if you had a future item agenda. This will be just a regular meeting also? Since you're adding the contract, you're adding legislation list. Is this gonna be a regular meeting? Or just the stuff you wanna handle as far as the business part, like stuff you trying to get out timely?
That was my goal, but it doesn't, it's not restricted to that. If we, if you agree to meet and we develop an agenda based on that.
If I'm not mistaken, because it's not on our regular scheduled meeting, it would still be considered a special call meeting. So you're gonna have to list whatever you want to discuss on there.
Before you advertise it.
The priorities on there, we need to at least put it on there. If you want to have the city manager discussion of the contract, that need to be on there. So I'm agreeing with in it, all of those. But we do have to list it and post it and advertise it for that reason.
I guess I have another one. I guess I'm kinda using this as a future. Yeah, I know that we haven't been able to generate revenue actually at the restaurant. I wanted to actually talk about maybe the possibility of even adding that to one of our facilities that can be rented until we actually get a restaurant up and going. It's kind of just sitting there and that's not possible for us to do.
No, sir. You'd have to have state approval. That's what the contract requires with the state. That anything that you do with that has to go through that to the same board.
Okay.
No, I was gonna, that was one of the things I want to recommend, but I wanted to just put it on the agenda so we can make a determination as to which way we want to go before we submit it to the legislators, I guess.
No, to discuss it, it would be fine.
Say what?
Yes, sir. To discuss it would be fine. It's just that you can't act on it and start to lease it or anything like that.
Oh, yes. And well, and I guess my question is, I really, some ideas or whatever we want to do is just try to put that on the table and see which direction we want to move in. I know we have to go through the legislature to do that, but, okay. And that don't necessarily have to be on this next meeting because that's probably gonna be a drawn-out process, but.
And then that, I think to keep adding will be midnight at this particular meeting. But we also need to determine whether or not we're gonna solicit to go out for any type of assistance as far as the lobbyists. We got to determine, we need to have a yea or nay on it, whether one way or the other. But we can't sit and wait till the last meeting decides. We'll do it on our own. We may be able to and may have to. But if we have time and can afford it, that may be our best bet to at least try to secure some of these funding.
That was my future agenda.
So it'll be a discussion of it, what would be our strategy? What would be our next step as far as the hearing of a lobbyist if we're gonna talk?
That's for December seventeenth or that's for the next?
We need to at least start the discussion, so it need to be added on the December seventeenth.
I might also like to add, I'd like for us to at least have a discussion too about, I know this has been mentioned before, but the process of, that entire process from beginning to end of actually hiring a city manager. I think we need a workshop on that at some point and we need to discuss that.
There is a resolution that we passed that deals with the application process as far as the city charter numbers, other than the attorney, the city manager and the clerk. We passed a resolution about two months ago.
But we never did a workshop.
Yeah.
Because we're unfamiliar with what that process is like from beginning to end, what model to use, what factors to take into consideration. Reason I'm asking is because I'm noticing a trend with us and also some misconceptions, even when it comes down to compensation and what factors determine those things. I think a workshop is absolutely necessary for us to get, gain better perspective on what that whole thing is like. And especially with pretty much the topic that we ended on, compensation and what factors determine that. So I think a workshop is definitely something that we all need for perspective.
I think we put, let's shut up my person.
So if we can entertain a motion of having a special call meeting on December the?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth?
Yes, sir.
At what time?
Six P M.
Mayor, I make a motion that we would have a special call meeting. Do I have to list all of it? Because I don't know all of what the priorities were.
No, you don't have to.
December seventeen, twenty twenty-four at six P M.
It'll be on advertisements too, so. The clerk, they'll list on advertisement. It have to be shared with the public of what we're planning on discussing. So he'll add that, make sure that's on there. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved by Vice Mayor Bourbon and properly second by Commissioner Bowden that we have a special call meeting on December the seventeenth at six P M. Call for questions. Here and under, you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Bourbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Mayor Vab?
Yes.
And that does it for my report, ma'am.
Okay, now we have the report of the city attorney.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just very briefly, I wanted to remind all of you that you have your four-hour ethics requirement that you have to complete by the end of the year. Your city clerk may have already mentioned it. But if you need additional hours, let me know. We can set something up. I know most of you have gone to the League of Cities and you've done other trainings and so you may not need it, but I just didn't want you to be caught without having it. Because it is a Florida legislative requirement that you have four hours to include, you know, the regular ethics, sunshine law, public meetings and that kind of thing. Thank you.
Everyone had beer for hours?
I did mine.
I did mine and, um.
I think the clerk probably has a form that you would complete. Do you have the form for them?
Once they go to, well, that's for Palm Beach County, but if they go to the conferences, then they send back certificates.
I need my mine too. I think you gave it to your attorney.
Yes.
I think you have mine too.
I may need to set something up with your attorney because I don't have one.
Okay.
I wasn't able to attend the last meeting.
Now, did I send mine to you?
I will have to look.
Okay.
I know I have a certain have Vice Mayor Murvis and Commissioner McPherson. There's an offering that's on the calendar as well. So if you want to get with the city attorney or if you just look at the calendar.
What date is it?
I think I sent mine.
And that calendar one is by Zoom too, right? Last time I did it, they didn't even send the certificate. But I'll redo it again and just make sure I get it done.
But you can, I think it's your attestation, so it's actually.
Okay, right, okay.
So the final offering, which is for the state mandate continued education and ethics, is on December eighteenth. And it'll be from ten A M. to three thirty P M. And that is offered.
Ten A M. to what?
League of Cities has that.
Ten to three?
Yes, ten to three thirty. So ten A M. to three thirty on December eighteenth.
Okay, what was your last statement? I couldn't hear you with the last.
The details are on the calendar. So I have it on the calendar. And then you just click the link to register.
Okay.
That's all. That completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll have future agenda items of the commission, if any.
I just have one, Mayor Vab. Shallow Missionary Baptist Church is having their one hundred year centennial celebration. So I'm asking that if we can do a proclamation for Shallow Missionary Baptist Church, I will get the history to you, to the clerk. I will get that and give it right now.
When is the celebration?
Thing is in March.
Oh, in March, okay.
But they are asking, they doing like ads. And also they're asking if the city will like to purchase a ad. I think the full page is a hundred dollars and a half pages, fifty and a quarter pages, twenty-five.
I have a future agenda. I don't know if we have this, so I'm gonna ask, do we have a second chance policy for nonviolent offenders with regard to employment?
I'm not aware. I'm not altogether sure. Did you have a question?
I will have to look.
Yeah, we would have to research that.
Okay. So that's something I want us to take into consideration.
Yeah, we discussed that enough, that it should be.
I think there is a process.
I thought so too, but I wouldn't want to say sure.
I think actually the mayor brought something, it was a few years back.
Yes, it was a while back.
It was at a time when everybody was talking about the, and I forget the catchy word for it, but a.
Well, we actually encouraging people to have second chance and not doing it ourselves. That's kind of.
Yeah, yes, it was, it was, yeah. It was something, and it may have been, I don't know even if it was a resolution, but I know it was a lot of discussion about it. And it was something to change the application form, I think. And so it has something to do with the employment application. So.
If not, we can always address that as soon as we can. Okay. We're working ourselves, any, any, Commissioner, Kyle Wee?
I just have one question. I know I said I want.
We're gonna get your questions on which caller.
That is the question.
No, we're gonna do your questions on your comments. I'm trying to get the future agenda.
This was for future agenda item.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Ms. Wee, we need you to go.
No, go ahead.
Commissioner Bowden?
I'm done. That's it.
You had any?
The only two I had was just the priority list that we need to make sure. But we're just gonna put that on the, yeah, for the priority list and the restaurant. I don't know if we want to do that at the next meeting, but we can make that on the future agenda items for the following meeting.
Okay, next is our.
You gonna vote on any of those? On the future agenda?
Agenda items.
Yes, sir.
You have to do it separately, whatever you have.
Okay. And we have a whole list of them. You can saw it.
Shallow. Shallow Missionary Baptist Church proclamation, that was the first one.
So I make a motion, Mayor, that we would do a proclamation for Shallow Missionary Baptist Church for their one hundred year celebration.
Second. Been moved and second moved by Vice Mayor, second by Commissioner Bowden to a proclamation for Shallow Mission. Call for questions. Ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Murvis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Mayor Vab?
Yes. Motion passed by unanimous vote.
And the next one was second chance policy for ex-offenders.
We're gonna look up the policy if there's none, then we're gonna at least have it on the agenda too.
Right.
Okay.
Discussion. Moved by?
Commissioner Bowden.
Commissioner Bowden, second by Vice Mayor Murvis. Call for questions. Roll call.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murvis?
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Mayor Vab?
Yes, motion passed, unanimous vote.
Direction for the restaurant at the Marina?
Moved by Commissioner McPherson, second by Vice Mayor Murvis. Questions?
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Just for clarification, I thought you said Commissioner McPherson that it doesn't have to be on this next agenda.
No, not, no, we can put that on the.
I guess it's for the next previous, I mean, I guess we in January.
Okay, I see.
Especially meeting, we.
Okay, I see, not the, I got it, not the special meeting, got it, got it, thank you, okay.
We have a motion and second, questions, nine, ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Cowan-Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes, motion passed unanimous vote.
And then legislative priorities.
Legislative priorities?
Commissioner McPherson.
Commissioner McPherson.
Now, that one is for the special meeting. Yeah, that was for the special meeting.
Second by Commissioner Bowden. Call for question, hearing none, ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Cowan-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes, motion passed unanimous vote.
That was it.
Okay. Sit, Commissioner comments, and I'm going to start with Commissioner Williams.
Commissioner Wee?
Um, I just want to thank the residents, um, for all that listened tonight and, um, I just want to say it's very disheartening as a commissioner that, um, it's not acceptable to ask questions and want to understand. But I just want the residents to know that I will continue to do my best. I will, um, continue to make decisions that are best for the city. And, um, if they are not good decisions for the city, I will not, um, I will not support and move forward them. I want to thank you for your continued support and continuing to get involved with the city. Thanks.
Commissioner Bowden?
I have no comments.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Um, just want to say, um, thank you to the, um, City of Pohokee residents. So I know we'll be back on December seventeenth, I pray they won't have a, uh, happy holidays. I know we'll be back, uh, won't be here right before Christmas. Um, also that, um, with us as commissioners, I don't, I, and I'm clear for myself, it's not the ideal. I think we, you can't ask questions, I don't think no one made that, um, assumption that no questions could be asked. I don't think that was, that was, that was not, that was not made. You can ask questions, um, my only concern and also about, um, meeting with the city manager or we work and they'll don't work, what, what, what have you. Um, but the thing is that you have a, we have staff that does, I think they do a very good job. I, 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 I would, not saying that they're perfect, because we are not other. But I think that once, that we, we have to trust the staff that we have working, that we have working diligently uh, in the city. Um, there are opportunities, whether it be phone calls and whether it be going into Mr. Jackson's office or what have you. I don't think none of us in there all day long, every day, I, I don't, I don't, I don't assume that. But we have questions that, yeah, ask your questions. I don't think that was ever, uh, 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 assumption that you couldn't ask questions to get understanding. But I, I do and I still stand behind that, I think we should trust our staff that we have working and, uh, on our day-to-day, our day-to-day operations. And, and if there's questions, hey, we may, we make those phone calls. But sometime we gets in our own way and we stop progress sometime. As, as commissioners, we stop things, we stop things from happening. So, um, we're going to have some disagreements and, and that's fine. We're, we're not all the same, we don't think the same. But I think that if we continue to work diligently together, I think we all up here for the betterment of the city. I don't think none of us up here just, just to be up here because we all could have been doing, doing something, um, other than being here. But I think we're all trying to make the best decision for the city. I, and I, and I would commend all of us on the, on our efforts of what we're putting forth as a city and working together. And I think if we continue to do that, we will have a good commission, we will move the city forward. I think we're, we're on that path. And it just takes a little, yeah, it goes takes a little, uh, knockdown bruises, but we, we could do it. We could do it if we could continue to work together and not pull apart because, and just, and just pull it together. Uh, staff is not perfect, we're not perfect, we make wrong decisions. But if we continue to work together and, and trust the staff that we have working, working in the city, I think we, we will be good. So I just pray that we continue to be as one and see our staff as one also. Good night.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes, uh, Mike, I don't know if the workshop was be considered future agenda items, but I want to make a, put on a, have a workshop for the performance evaluation so we can look through that process for our city manager as well as our city clerk. We can, uh, fine tune, um, that process. And one thing about me, I just want to thank the citizens for electing me to be their commissioner or one of their commissioners. And one thing that you're going to get out of Commissioner McPherson is transparency and accountability. I don't believe anything that we do in here for this, for this city is, is not our business, it's the City of Pohokee business. And there shouldn't be anything that we do here that we shouldn't be making available or be transparent with our citizens. And that's one thing that you're going to get out of me. I'm, I believe in holding myself accountable as well as our staff and and I don't take very lightly when, you know, accusations that I'm interfering with day-to-day po, uh, activities or whatever that case was. But I am going to ask questions. And if I think it's something that's going to benefit our city and move our city forward, I'm going to continue to ask the necessary questions I feel are necessary. And again, I'm going to be, I ran on being transparent and I'm going to be that while I'm not going to change. I'm going to be transparent and accountable. And that goes for me being accountable to the citizens that elected me. And thank you all.
Having had all business taken care of that was brought before us.
Mayor Bab, I'm sorry, we have one announcement. On Saturday, we're going to be having a teen event. It's called Seventeen and Me. And, um, they have over seventy teens that registered for this event on Saturday. So we want to thank all the residents of their teens. Hopefully this is a teen program that can get started in the city, um, that, that's being brought to the city and it's going to be on Saturday. And your teens had to register in order to participate. Um, there will be no on-site registrations and it'll be at the Etta Lee Rose Gym and it's going to be from twelve to five on, um, Saturday with Seventeen and Me.
Just add to that, and they're also going to be giving away PlayStations and some other things like that, but it's going to be a health fair for teens.
I think one of the things that you want to make sure is included in the announcement is that there's a limitation of one hundred participants. So once that one hundred capacity is, is filled, then no one else will be able to participate. And the deadline to submit an application was at five P M. today.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Second, whatever. I love all y'all.
I'm sorry.
Don't take none of this personal, I don't.
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Cowan-Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes, meeting adjourned at eight thirty-nine P M.